I'm going to call the Village of Norfondy Fest, Village of Norfondy Fest meeting to order. Audience members have requested to sign in on the sheet provided the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda item may speak under item C. Rule call officers.
Keith King.
Here.
Ann Price.
Here.
Mike Streeter.
Here.
Mike Will.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, citizen participation. None, move down to announcements. Move up to this Chuck, or yeah. Tonight, we're going to move up, if it's okay with the board, on your revised agenda under Administration Number Four, for appointment of our new trustee, Randy Stotts. We're going to move it up to announcements, so he can get the ground running. So, we will swear Randy in.
If I would just do it right over here.
Okay.
For those that noticed, there is a revised agenda on your revised agenda. So, raise your hand. I, Stridane.
I, Randolph Stotts.
Have been elected or appointed to the office of Village Trustee.
Have been elected or appointed to the office of Village Trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
I swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Hey, welcome Randy. So, I'd like to welcome our newest trustee, Randy Stotts. We'll move down to President's Business and Staff Reports. Library Heather.
Hi, thank you. We are gearing up for our summer reading program, and so Hannah has been busy visiting with lots of children, and she's visited with nearly 500 so far, with more to follow on this coming Tuesday. We're getting ready with our flyers that will go out to the children that sign up, which has some six weeks of reading on this part. And then this part was the part that was published in The Villager. So, if anyone wants a preview of what's going on this summer, feel free to take a Villager from the library and take a look at what we've got coming up for activities. The official start date is June 11th, but the early sign up is June 1st, so that's coming up really quickly. So, the only other thing I have to mention is that we are now, for the summer, closed on Saturdays, and will be closed Monday for the holidays. So, that's all I have.
Thank you Heather.
Question for Heather. Last year, when we were talking about Winifred cutting back on some of their services, one of those, I think, helping put these flyers together.
Right.
How is that happening this year?
This year, we used the template from last year, and we used the clip art that they sent us and printed them right at the library, so.
For you, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you Heather. Lakeside Municipal Court.
The court currently is not here, she went on sick today.
Okay. Nothing important, okay. Administrator.
It was last week, several staff went to the dark sky simulation. It was where, it was a collaboration of the private and public sectors where Alliant, along with the National Guard, simulated a attack, in a sense, on the substation on Van Dyne Road. It's one of the dark sky events that happened throughout the state. And it was an interesting sit-down. It was kind of held in a room, we were talking a little bit about the alliance between the private and public and prepare for such an event, whatever would happen. So, it was a good exercise. Last week, we held the Lakeside Municipal Court Executive Review Committee meeting. We were notified that Rosendale is leaving the municipal court, and because of that, all members, there are 14 after Rosendale leaves, that need to pass what they call an intergovernmental agreement, plus an ordinance, just in a sense, almost recreating the Lakeside Municipal Court. So, that process has started. It all has to be completed by May of next year. So, we thought we'd get an early start, get all the language changed and updated from what was on their current agreements, and get that ready to roll. Other than that, you probably will see at on her desk, some iPads, that's something new that we're starting. We're trying to be a little more efficient on trying to get the packets out and the information to the board members, and we're going to be doing it through the iPad. So, we'll see, we'll probably be stumbling a little bit for the first few meetings, but I think it's a great step. Thank you.
Thanks Chuck. Police Department Darren.
Thank you. I passed out at the start of the meeting, the April monthly reports, you have those numbers in front of you. Additionally, last week, I'd sent an email to staff acknowledging them for some of the stuff that they had been involved in in recent weeks. I CC'd all of you on that email. One of the things on there that I just want to point out again tonight was the, with the passing of the Assistant District Attorney Dennis Krieger, one of the things that they did to memorialize Dennis was a countywide honor guard casket watch. And I'm really happy and proud to say that members of our honor guard, Sean Hendricks, Tim Bakri, Jack Rue, and Mickey Fink, were able to participate in that during the two services on Friday night and Saturday morning. It's a great honor, it's a humbling experience, and I'm grateful to them for giving of their time to make that happen. Additionally, our honor guard participated in a countywide honor guard for the memorial service in Fond du Lac last Tuesday as part of National Police Week. Again, wanted to recognize and thank Jack Rue and Sean Hendricks for, again, giving of their time to make that happen. I was also able to make, to attend that ceremony on Tuesday. Later on Tuesday, I participated in the dark sky exercise that Chuck mentioned. I was there as an observer and evaluator. It was a great learning opportunity for everybody involved. It's one of the first times that we've partnered with a private industry to conduct an exercise like that. And we learned a lot about Alliant's capabilities, as well as equipment that they have that could be useful not only during that type of an incident, but could be useful for law enforcement, fire responses, anything of an emergency nature that we weren't otherwise aware of. Lastly, I just wanted to mention our hiring process. We've been conducting background checks the last week and a half on several of the candidates. When we narrow that down based on those background checks, the next step would be a conditional offer. That's all I have.
Thanks Darren. Fire EMS Jake.
Thank you. This week's National EMS Week, so I want to thank all of our guys that work here, as well as throughout the nation, for the service that they provide. It started off this week, the school district, they wrote letters to not only our department, but other departments in the area. And today Chandler and I were at the high school working out, and they, we met up with one of the teachers, and he presented them to us. So, I want to thank the school district for that, it was a kind gesture. We had a gas leak on the frontage road this past week, and we had the road closed down from Mockingbird Lane up to by the stretch. And there were multiple signs in the roadway, and we actually had PD on, over by Mockingbird Lane, and a lot of people were driving around the signs and coming down there. So, I just want to set a reminder out there that, you know, if there's road closed signs, we try to clear up the activity on the road as fast as we can, but we were working with Alliant on trying to get the line shut down in a fast and orderly fashion. So, please obey those signs, we don't put them up for fun. We don't need traffic driving down past us when we're trying to work. We're going to be hosting a fire officer, one class here this fall. I currently have seven guys that are going to be taking the class, which is a good thing. I'm looking for a few more yet, and I've had some interest from other departments to take the course as well. Lastly, next week, I have a meeting with the new district coordinator for fire prevention. So, he'll be able to help out with fire inspections, fire prevention week, stuff like that, to give us ideas. And if we run into something in a public building that could be potentially hazardous, you know, he can guide us in the right direction and make sure that those problems get fixed. So, that is all I have.
Thanks Jake. Public Works Nick.
Thank you. I attended the TSC committee last week. I put on the weekly report, I spelled all these out this time, so it gets a couple new board members that maybe don't know what all of these are. So, the Technical Services Committee is the TSC, is part of the OSG, which is the Outlawry Sewer Group, and I serve on that committee. So, we had a meeting last week. We, a lot of the discussion had to do with the huge rain event we had a couple weeks prior, and how the plant handled that, along with, they're always updating us on the, on the new phosphorus regulations there. They also have a new sewer plant operator very recently, in the last month or so, so new person there. Indian Avenue, I mentioned, should be completed as I was writing this, which was Friday, and it is complete. All they have left to do is touch up a little bit of landscaping where they hatched in some of the asphalt driveways. I think it turned out great. If you haven't been down there, take a look. We'll talk about the intersection later tonight. We put up a temporary stop sign down there to make it a three-way stop, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But I think all in all the project, considering the weather that we've had this spring, went very smooth and quite, actually pretty quick. On Thursday, then attended the OSG meeting at the Olang Sewer Group, which is made up of 18 or 19 different sanitary districts that all go to the city of Fond du Lac's wastewater treatment plant. And Paul Teller from the Fond du Lac County Land and Water Conservation Department came and gave a presentation on, there's this multi-discharger variance, which is what the city's applied for, for the next five years, as part of this phosphorus regulation. That was one of the options they had. They, they do have the multi-discharger variance from the DNR, and as part of that, they're basically paying a fine to the county for going over the phosphorus limits for the next five years. So, that could be anywhere from eighty to $200,000 a year annually that will be paid to the county. The county then takes that money and works on the watershed projects to help lower the phosphorus in the lake. We're paying, we'll be paying part of that. The OSG is collectively 26% of the entire wastewater treatment plant, and we're about 25% of that, 26%. So, we will be paying part of that, but that's the, for the next five years, the process that the city is taking on that. We've been dealing with a number of zoning and property maintenance issues condemnation. Pete and I had a meeting last week with one of our legal consultants about one of those properties, and we'll continue to work on those. Most of them are moving forward and getting cleaned up. There's, there's a couple that are just taking a little more time and a little bit more legal work, so we'll continue to work on those. And that's all I have.
Hey Nick, on the phosphorus, what, that percentage that we pay is that based on our actual usage, or not based on what we're paying for the capacity?
Based on, well, that's a discussion that's going to be had in the next few months.
Okay.
Obviously, we want to pay on, on what we're using. For the phosphorus, it all depends on what type of a project they're doing. The multi-discharger variance fine will be paid for on definitely our portion of the plant. Not our portion of the plant, but our portion of the sewage that's going to that plant on an annual basis, so.
Okay.
But there's other capital projects coming up that will, we have to have that discussion. That's one of the things we work on at the TSC.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, move down to consent agenda. Number one, approve, approve the minutes of the following village board meetings, 5/7/2018 and 5/16/2018. Number two, approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds. General Fund, $46,805.27. Outdoor Rec, $309.93. Library Fund, $1,610.62. EMS Fund, $2,265.12. Capital Projects, $68,994.85. Water Department, $7,635.95. Water, wastewater department, $4,386.1. Community Development Authority, TIF, $13,937.42. Stormwater Fund, $11,864.14, for a grand total of $157,809.31. And approve or deny operators license for Jenny Angizi for Outdoor Rec, 704 Michigan. Jaden Mazenka, Outdoor Rec, W-7518 Lincoln Road. Stephanie Elmquist, Jen's, Jen's Bar, W-9160 State Road 23. Lisa Zarecki, Rumors, 854 Wisconsin Avenue. Kevin Hooser, Rumors, 10 Oriole Parkway. And Tanya Hooser, 10 Oriole Parkway. What is your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve, the consent agenda is read.
Can I get a second?
Second motion.
Got a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion?
I just have a few questions.
Sure.
I still have a few questions. Ashley, uh, Thor, Davis and.
Attorneys.
Their attorneys, yes.
And general labor.
It just means that they just have several, the invoice is made up of maybe four different items. It's whenever, you know, staff like Nick or Darren, or somebody has question, legal questions, they just call them, and it depends on what the question is.
What about MSA Professional Services?
It's our, the engineer consultants that we use for a number of different things. Most of this is probably for Indian Avenue.
It says Minnesota Avenue or Minnesota.
So, it's, the contract is called Minnesota Avenue, because Minnesota and Indiana, I don't know, it was probably prior to being on the board, Minnesota and Indiana were going to be done together.
Okay.
As part of one project.
Okay.
But there's really no more work being done in Minnesota.
Okay. That's fine.
Randy.
Yeah, thank you. Reading over to this, on a, on a couple of occasions, I see something where it says restitution from site, like on page seven, the first one, PDQ, restitution from site, it's an invoice, and could you explain what that means? Because restitution, to me, means that someone's paying us.
Well, these are people that.
Or is that just language?
For citations. So, this is for municipal court, they're paying the court because of some citation. And so, these are bills that go, or the payment that gets paid, let's say somebody stole something at PDQ, they pay us and we pay PDQ back.
Okay, thank you.
There's probably a list on the last page of maybe 68 that show all of those that have restitution. Well, those are refunds, so there are some restitutions there. It's on page 10, you wait almost to the end. The last chunk way on the bottom, you've got some refunds, some restitutions. It depends on how they process them, it depends on where they may end up in this list.
Hey Chuck, what was the interest for the association?
That was the loan that we have on 21.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Administration, discussion of possible action to allow for an exception to ordinance 14.18 that does not allow for the discharge of fireworks.
Do you want to take a mic there?
Sure. All right. This has to do with the Norfondy Fest. This year's, as we had announced a couple times, that we're going to like a, just a half-day event due to just having a hard time finding volunteers to help us out. So, our event is starting at four o'clock that afternoon, and the concern for the committee was, you know, trying to find a hook to try to get more people to come out to the event. So, there's a gentleman out here in the village that works for a fireworks company, and we, we got together with him, he came down and talked to Chuck and Lori, and they took a look over the, the proposed contract, and we had, you know, some issues, or we just had concerns with liability, insurance, and everything, and like I said, Chuck and Lori took a look at that, and, and everything seemed to be on the up and up. So, the, the village has an ordinance, says that we can't discharge fireworks, and tonight we're going to talk about, maybe just cutting us some slack for that night, and let us celebrate our 30th anniversary, and do something different, and have a fireworks show at the intermission of the band.
Maybe one other comment, I'm not sure Jake, if you had any, I think we talked to you a little bit about this as well, and do you have any comments on it at all?
Yeah, I, you know, like I said, that they are going to have an issue as long as the fire hazard isn't moderate or high, you know, and our winds aren't going 30 miles an hour, you know, that'd be my concern. So, I'd say anything more than a 20 mile an hour wind, roughly in there, you know, I'd be concerned. And if the DNR says that there's a moderate or high fire probability, but that, like I said, is kind of a, that day decision.
And you took a look at the map for what we're looking at the area?
I actually was never sent a map of where.
It should have been in your packet. This wasn't in your packet.
I don't know.
There you go. You just move this one.
Yeah, there you go.
What they're doing is just kind of coordinating off, you know, call a safe zone, if you want to call it that. They're going to actually close off Garfield from that, what street is that?
Main Avenue.
Main Avenue. And, and it asked about having, you know, maybe one of the pumper sitting on that parking area that will block off so that there's room there, just to case of some event.
So, they'd be firing them off from the back of the diamond, from the, the west diamond?
As my understanding is, yes.
Mike, did you have something?
I did have something. We had our Norfondy Fest meeting last night, couple concerns, I guess, things that were identified were the two houses that are on Garfield, that we're going to send them a letter saying that they're going to be blocked off there, so I'm not sure if they will allow them through, in and out of their driveways during that period, or not, I'm saying they will. I don't know if there's any concern about those houses being that close. And you talked about whether the wind and stuff like that, they might not be safe to fire off. Who's going to make the call, the fireworks vendor or the fire department? I mean, who, who makes that call, you know?
Well, that'll be a collaborative thing, the day, we'll just, we'll just talk to.
Oh, I'll be there early enough, so, you know, I'd assume you'll be there all day. So, we'll be there probably, you know, 3:30, 4 o'clock, get our, our stuff set up, so we can talk then.
Okay.
We talked about, you know, that green, where that green line is, where they want people to back from, how we're going to, you know, keep people out of that area cones, or some caution tape, or what, I mean, that's just another discussion we had. We can work those details though. I don't want, I don't have an issue with it, but there were some of the things that we talked about.
Well, it sounds like they're going to be putting caution tape up where that green line is, correct?
Well, maybe just a comment on that, when we talked to the actual person, you know, we said rather than try to do that, we just keep them off of both diamonds, you know, this green one going through the east diamond probably will follow the fence line around it all the way to the grounds for the Norfondy Fest and up to the north there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Actually keep them out of them, let the fence be part of your.
You're right about the, the west one is sectioned off already, so.
Yeah, might as well just follow it right around.
Hopefully that will stay off.
Yep.
Just remaining some information.
Anything else Mike?
Nope.
All right, anybody else have any comments or concerns? Ann?
When would you be letting them off?
We'll do the intermission probably, I believe it was like Mike, about 9:00, 9:30, something like that, or somewhere around that time where we announce the winner.
8:30 or 8, 9:15, or 9:15, because it's halfway between, that's when we're going to announce the raffle ticket winner.
Right. And then announce that we're, you know, just celebration of the 30th anniversary, and then, you know, get a message to them that it's good to go, and then start the fireworks show. And it's only going to last like 15 minutes, so it's not like some crazy long show. Chuck?
Maybe just a couple other things too, because of the, the touchstone and Heather Meadows, those things too, we're going to make sure that they're well aware, even, you know, all of these apartments in those areas that, we'll try our best weeks before to, you know, keep iterating that the fact that this is happening, it's going to be around this time. You know, sometimes when fireworks starts, they, they do, I don't know what they call it, recognition, with just a boom, you know, I mean, it's just something like, oh heck, that's right, there's fireworks, and they're going to not do any of those. That's at least what I was talking, so, just to help ease some of those concerns.
Mike?
How do you plan to get that notice sent? Just kind of, I'm just a reference here and touchstone and those.
Probably hand deliver them, I mean, especially to those nursing homes and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? So, I need a motion to either approve or deny the exception for allowing the fireworks.
I'll make a motion to approve the exception of, to ordinance 1418 with the collaborative approval that evening from the fire department and the fireworks specialist.
I'll second that. So, we got a motion by King, second by Streeter, to approve the exception. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Discussion of having two village board members on the library board.
I just wanted to close the loop on that a little bit, because the last time we had talked with Ann and, and Mike are currently as members, they can't both be voting members, and Mike, I felt volunteered to say he'd be willing to be a liaison and a nod voting member, and I talked to the county executive about it, and he said he's fine with that as long as Mike is fine with it, you know, and they'll revisit that again when it comes after your three, two-year term, two-year term for this position, and so, I didn't even have it as any action here, because I think it's something that Mike just agreed to, and Ann would stay as a voting member as part of the village board. So, thanks for doing that, Mike.
Awesome. And Mike, you gave, I think we talked about that last time, you gave other, the wording for like, for a quorum if, if the rest of the board.
Toys on the bottom.
Okay. Good, good. All right, we know number three, discussion of possible action on approving the 2018 IAFF union contract.
Well, just maybe a side note on this too, you know, when I sent out the package to the iPads, I put it all together, and that got to be a huge file for the iPad, and so I pulled the contracts out of what you actually end up getting on your iPads, and because of the fact they wanted to show you the current and the proposed, that got to be a pretty lengthy document, so that's just a preface of that. I guess maybe just a little bit as to why it's now May, and we're still working on signing a 2018 contract. You know, I've been working with the EMS staff off and on, just trying to finalize what, what we felt wanted to be in it, and they're going through a little bit of a transition, trying to settle in on some operational, and we kept finding a little bit more to add, a little bit more to add, and we finally said, that's just run with what's here. So, that's some of the reasoning why, and if you look through the proposed 2018 portion of this stack of paper, you'll see a lot of yellow. That, all that yellow is language that is operational, it's kind of, maybe I was stealing both of you guys' thunder on it, maybe I won't say anymore, but that's kind of what.
Yeah, a lot of it is operational, and a lot of it had to do with the titles of people. That was a lot of the changes that were made. And listed on the court package sheet are the changes that really have to do with money, you know, and budget items. I did talk with the union heads in Adams here, he's the vice president, or the president of the union, couldn't make it tonight. And the goal is to start making these contracts early in the year, like August, September, so when the time comes, if they want to change something in the budget, you know, it's something that I can look at, manipulating, and then presenting to the board, I guess. So, it kind of would work hand in hand, where they'd get a contract approved for the following year, almost the same time where the budget for the following year would get approved.
There were a couple things that were discussed that had budget impact, and we pulled those back out, because just to what Jake was saying, we, we felt it wasn't the, the time to discuss on that. I felt the operational parts of this are how they want to run their department, and I didn't feel that that would be a concern or, or an issue with the board accepting those changes to the 2018 budget, uh, contract.
The first thing, I can run through the three things listed. It's a change in the call-in pay for transports, so the interfacility ambulances, you guys know, are staffed five days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and we're finding a lot of calls, the call log is actually included in your packet, that are coming after 7:00 PM on the weekdays or on the weekends. So, we're looking to kind of boost up the incentive to come in on those days off, especially since that money is made up with running these transports.
What Jake is referring to is this spreadsheet with the colors on it and things like that.
Yeah, if you get to. Yeah, if you get to, um, if I didn't.
Probably starting on page three is probably where you're gonna see.
Yeah, so March, April, um, and May, the beginning of May, uh, that's on here, you can see there were quite a few missed calls because of staffing, uh, after hours.
Who's up first?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see Anne's place.
Anne, go ahead.
Sure, I guess what happens if, so where it says no staff is called, someone called in for ambulance and we weren't able to go because they're not staffed, or is that right?
Correct, yeah, an interfacility transport, not a nine-one-one call.
Okay.
So it would be in that window from seven PM to seven AM or on the weekend that.
And so if the, if someone was able to go, we would charge for that then, so we would make up the fifty dollars, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Can you tell, um, how much that would cost us? I guess, cause some- sometimes people do, are available, right, sometimes people aren't.
Correct, yeah.
Can you tell how many times we paid the twenty-five dollars this year or, or six months time?
I'd have to look at. What would you say, fifteen? Twenty? We started that late too, later.
Yeah, that, doing our advertising of, uh, western hospital calls after hours.
Okay.
Um, and with that, with that around, it's like a call, it's more after hours.
So we had fifteen after hour.
They were t- yeah. Twenty, yeah.
And how much do you, like, on average, do we make for each transport?
Uh, about half of what we charge, so roughly, uh, we charge, I'd have to look at the numbers to give you specifics, but it's right around eight hundred dollars for a run, and then mileage is seventeen roughly, a mile, a loaded mile.
So let's just say, leave it at the eight hundred for, uh, two people to come in on a five oh two call, average wages plus the twenty-five dollars, what, what would that come to? It's probably.
Uh, yeah.
It's between one and two hundred dollars probably?
Yeah, it's probably fifty-five to sixty-five a person.
Yeah.
So anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty dollars per pers- or, yeah, total.
Okay.
Minus fuel, that's pretty much fuel, and, uh, linens would be the real only two things that we'd be using of our own. If they have to send somebody, um, down to a different hospital, we will take the supplies that are already, you know, being used by the patient. For example, IV, you know, stuff like that, so.
Anything else, Anne? Mike?
Yeah, okay, I'm, but when we set this transport up, did, we weren't really banking on the after hour stuff, we were going for the seven to seven stuff, pretty much, weren't we, we weren't.
Yeah.
And now we're trying to expand it out, is that?
Well, we're not trying to expand it out, um, by adding any hours or anything, it's more or less, there's a lot of revenue that sits out there that we're not able to collect at all because we're not taking the transports, um, and it also can be difficult on a Friday, Saturday, uh, afternoon, night to pull people in, saying here's twenty-five dollars, you know, it could be difficult, so I think with the increase to fifty, we'll see the amount of calls that we must go down.
But you said it was gonna be fifty, fifty dollars a person for calling, right? So that would be a hundred dollars alone, just for the call-in, that doesn't include the wages? If you call in full-time people, it's gonna be time and a half?
Yeah, and we typically shy away from that, we typically are looking for, uh, part-time people to come in.
Was there any other thought about just paying them a minimum hours that save, you get a call-in, you get four hours of pay, I mean, there's, was there any talk about that instead of a, a stifling?
I'm not sure what was discussed with negotiations.
Language in the contract that has to do with call-ins, and it is, if you were called in to cover shift, say I go home sick, I have to call somebody and they come in for an hour, they automatically pay six hours. And we wanted to try to stay away from that amount, considering that it's two totally different situations, coming in for somebody who's on shift and ill versus coming in for this, where the goal in this is to keep our hospitals happy and the patients that are recruiting happy, so we do this timely. So to minimize the impact on the budget and to allow our employees to be happy as well, and then we were trying to find some bill ground, which is not jump all the way up to that six hour automatic. So what, what, what if you make the call and by the time they get here, it's called off? So what, what, what does that employee get paid? They'll get the bonus, and then I think we.
An hour, a minimum.
The drive time. So whatever power, we do red some people from OHS that we respond, so they'll get an additional hour, additional hour pay, plus some call-in bonus. Okay, thank you.
It's pretty rare for a call that comes in typically after seven, eight o'clock at night that they would cancel. A lot of times if they're calling for that, it's somebody that's off of a floor at St. Agnes that, uh, either went from the ED up to a floor and now they have to go to a specialist, let's say down in UW or something like that, and, uh, St. Agnes is unable to do the procedure and potentially that doctor's either coming in that night down at UW or they're coming in the next day, uh, to do it, but St. Agnes likes to open up their beds, uh, quickly, you know, they have a lot of people that go in and out of the ED that get admitted, um, so for us to be able to go there, you know, at any time is huge for them as well.
Anything else, Mike?
That's just right now.
Randy?
Thank you. So Jake, let me, um, can you explain, I guess, my question is, is you have, um, are you going to have your staff submit hours of availability that they would be able to do this? Uh, or, or how does that, I guess, my question is, how is that gonna work? How are you going to, um, make these calls? Or who will make these calls and, and I guess if, with availability, because you know that, you know, people, they're, when they're, they're off time is their off time, um, but I'm just curious on, on how you may address that?
Uh, so currently what we do is send out a message on I am responding, uh, and what it entails is this is, uh, the transport, this is where you're going, and this is the skill levels that we need, um, and we typically just have them peg right on, onto I am responding, so we can hit the refresh button, say, okay, we got two people that can come in, first two people on the board get to come in and take the transport, uh, if there's more than two. Uh, if that, if we don't get a response within a minute or two, we're typically gonna try to call the people that normally come in, uh, to take the transports. There was discussion with possibly doing, uh, an availability, um, type calendar, I guess, for, uh, the part-time people that are around, um, that's not included in, to this union contract, uh, as far as I know, um, but I know it was discussed and it would be, um, beneficial to have, you know, so you could almost solidify that if we do get a call, that would happen, but that's something that would have to get written into the contract and.
Our members brought that to us actually, and I brought it up, and trying to actually work on some logistics of that and um, what happens, you know, if something comes up and you're not available, or you sign up for a wrong day or things like that, is it gonna be disciplinary for it, is it not gonna be disciplinary because you're giving them the volunteer time? We contacted the attorney to see if it was legal for them to volunteer time if they're, or if they're on the, that was, uh, but the consensus of just trying to work through that whole process was that, uh, if we did create that availability, it really doesn't change anything that we already are doing now. So we didn't really find there to be a significant benefit for all the headache that it would cost. But I do have four people currently that are still, I cannot see if there is any feasible way to execute it.
Anything else, Randy?
Uh, no.
Mike?
I guess I just want to make clear, I mean, we talked about eight hundred dollars, but we captured about four hundred of that dollar, those dollars, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, I see it at the very least costing us two hundred dollars to, to come out and that's not including, you know, our fuel charge, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but let's use real numbers, it's four hundred and probably two hundred labor and, and, uh, equipment and, uh, uh, fuel charges, so, okay, just to make sure that we're clear.
Yeah, I would assume it'd be roughly twenty-five percent of what we actually bill out, I guess, is what we would take in, twenty-five, thirty percent. You know, after paying the employees and fuel and whatnot.
Is that it, Mike? Chuck?
One other thing that I think we need to keep in mind here is that, you know, if we're, we're running a transport service and we just do seven to seven and don't bother us outside these hours is, I'm not sure what that message sends the people that are calling us to, you know, I think, personally, I think the more we feel that we are responding, the more we're trying to make an effort to do everything, we're gonna keep going higher and higher on our list to be called, you know, I, I see that ambulance five oh two going out quite a bit during the day, you know, and I, you know, it's growing well and I, I think this piece of it just helps that whole cause.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's big that we're missing those calls, it is big.
You know, I think initially when we talked and it kind of to your point too, Mike, where are we expanding our hours and Jake was correct, we're not expanding it, but that was always on the table that if it ever grows to that point or justifies it, I'm not saying we're there yet, but I think this is something that maybe seven to seven, seven days a week or, you know, fourteen hours a day or something, that we see that those are the hours that are more of our transports are coming, but I think until we are available and anxious to take these, I'm not sure that it helps, it costs to get anywhere.
Yeah.
Is that it, Chuck?
Keith? Thank you. Yeah, I also agree with it, I think in order to grow it, I mean, you have to be available, we're still making money on the deal, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a minimum of probably eight hundred dollars, is that include, does that eight, is that eight hundred include mileage?
No.
And mileage is at what, it's about seventeen bucks a mile?
Yeah.
So the farther the better. Hey, I'm just being a realist, I mean, seventeen bucks a mile?
Yeah.
You know, let's go to Milwaukee, I mean, you know, so, I, it's a no-brainer, I mean, you're making money, you're growing the, the operation for to pay somebody fifty bucks and an hour's worth of pay to come in? Makes sense to me.
Yeah, typically if we go to UW Madison, uh, Milwaukee, it's three, four hour turnaround time between getting here, getting to St. Agnes, picking the patient up from St. Agnes, back in the ambulance, driving all the way down there, and then dropping the patient off, and then getting back in the ambulance and driving back.
Is Madison fifty miles one way, easily?
Uh, what is it? Seventy-two, I think, or seventy-three to UW.
Seventy-two, there's six.
Yeah.
And those bills typically range from fifteen to twenty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Anne?
Could, I mean, could you start making financial statements for this effort for us, so we can, I guess, what we're getting for revenue and what the costs are?
Sure. We can include that with the reports.
I think we're getting close to that next, um, marker where the next report would come out, I believe.
You mean the six month, you mean? So what, what marker do you mean?
Yeah, the, well, twelve months is almost here now. So, I mean, even at the next board meeting, I can bring the paperwork that, uh, we made. It'll just probably be, if that's all right, year-to-date. So from January one until now.
And maybe add, um, I guess, missed opportunities, what we're.
Yep, that's on there, yeah. I don't think she saw the, the last copy that I had handed out with five oh twos.
I think I saw it one time, but it was like one of my first meetings, so. Yeah, but I think that would just be helpful to keep it in front of us, so that we can see.
Yeah, definitely.
Jake, how's, how's five oh two holding up, that ambulance?
I think it's holding up very well.
And I think we mentioned that before, how are we, how are we gonna address that when, you know, I mean, if that does get the usage that, you know, like, you know, this continues to go well? How does it work if that thing starts, you know, nickel and dimas?
As in?
Like, how do, like, as far as like replacement, I mean, like, what, what are you looking at, like, I mean, if, if this is, is like successful as, you know, you hope it to be? How do we dress that down the road and?
I think it's, you know, depending on what the budget says that we can do, you know, I think that's the number one thing, um.
So is EMSAC part of that also, the replacement of that's the second one also?
Absolutely.
Okay, even though it's being used as a transport, that's, that's all?
Yeah, that's been brought up before, and that ambulance, I believe, has seventy-eight thousand miles on it, so it, you know, is still pretty young for a, you know, that chassis and the engine and so on and so forth, so it's not like it needs to be replaced in the next two to four years, you know, we're looking out further. Probably, what I've been looking for is like the eight-year mark instead of ten, just because the miles, we're going further distances, so on and so forth, if the call volume continues to grow, um, and depending where we're going, we could add up a lot of miles in a year, so I guess it all depends on, you know, where the budget's at and, um, how it, if we're spending a lot of money on, um, maintenance on that. I think the only thing that we have to do this year is put a steering box in it, and that'll be here shortly, I think, uh, Rob from DPW's gonna be doing that, and that's minimal cost in our maintenance budget.
Not putting words in your mouth, but I would think, and maybe you know this already, is the fact is probably five oh two would go away, five hundred would become five oh two and you'd get a new five hundred.
Yeah.
And that's probably the process, if you know that.
Yeah, it's like how it was in the past, yeah.
And, and the way those transports are built, are they built the same as like a regular call, like?
Yep.
Emergency call?
Yeah, LifeQuest treats it the same exact way, so they just get the, um, our reports that we'd submit and then, uh, they type up a bill for it and send it off to the patient.
And, and I understand what we make on the average call and everything and, you know, seeing the numbers, but what is the, are you concerned about the percentage that we don't recoup, that, you know, that we don't, that we, we, we can't collect?
Yeah, um, and I've actually been talking to Tim Rosin quite a bit as of recent to try to get a better understanding of how, um, adjustments are made and what the difference is year-to-year, I guess, they come out and flat-out say you could have a twenty percent difference in this year to this year, good or bad, um, so I've talked to him and I'm trying to, he put a CFO, so one of their financial officers on it, um, to try to get a better understanding on why that is, I guess, not saying that we're good or bad or indifferent right now, but I want to understand it personally. Um, I think right now our monthly billing and, or actually our monthly collections rate, so the money that we're actually bringing in is up like six or seven thousand dollars, I believe, um, compared to last year.
And that gentleman works for LifeQuest?
Correct, yeah, he's the vice president.
Okay.
Of the company.
Any other questions or comments?
You wanna talk about the other two items on there, or?
Yep.
Um, the boot purchases, that's essentially, uh, inflation, so to get a decent pair of EMS boots now, it's about a hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, once that holds up, so we don't have to replace them every single year, uh, and for pants, um, essentially the same thing.
Mike?
I guess I'm gonna move on if it, if you want, talk about the contract, like seventeen to zero one, so you, you're raising the comp time, you know, accumulate up to ninety-six hours and carry seventy-six. The only question I got with that is that.
Seventy-two, I believe.
Excuse me, seventy-two, you're right, but the only question I got about that is that by doing that, you're making the problem worse if you're having trouble with retention or getting people to respond because when you're paying out, instead of paying overtime, you're paying overtime and a half, so you gotta replace time and a half to try, try to find somebody to fill that spot.
I guess I don't understand that.
Because.
Well, comp time, so, so that is essentially vacation that the full-time people can accrue over a period of time depending on how much overtime that they have.
Right.
So we get paid, uh, I should say they get paid fifty-three hours and then three hours overtime every single week, and so typically on a paycheck, they have six hours overtime, and they can. they can actually take that six hours and accrue it as nine hours of comp time or they can take it as a payout. So I guess that's a little bit different.
I don't think they can take that six hours. I think if they pick up an extra shift. I'm not sure they can accrue those, can they accrue those six hours to?
Yeah, any overtime, yeah.
What I've learned is that, you know, by handing out a lot of comp time, it just creates a bigger problem for the shifts. Because when they take that comp time, you have to backfill that with the overtime, usually overtime, and you're giving up time. If you pay it out, you know, I don't cost us more, but then you gotta backfill positions. And if you have trouble filling positions ready, I think it makes it worse. This is my opinion.
We don't have trouble filling our positions now. You know, we get, we have eight guys right now and it's gonna be 10 soon. And, uh, there are two guys that are potentially gonna leave the department. Um, one to pursue a full-time career and one, uh, moving away to a different state. But regardless, um, we'll have eight part-time guys that are going to be cleared at some point to fill in either position on the ambulance, whether it's the medic spot or the second spot on the ambulance, meaning that I can schedule, um, I can schedule a part-timer in there to knock down any overtime for a full-time person. Uh, and then we also have ample part-time people to be able to fill in 502. Uh, so that person that works a 24-hour shift isn't gonna accrue any overtime.
So how many full-timers do you have right now?
Six.
Six full-timer medics?
Uh, s, four of them are medics.
Thank you.
Yep.
Here. Just, Mike, just, just to clarify that, if you look at number three under 1701, um, the last sentence in there says that, uh, it wouldn't be approved if it would require other employees to work overtime. Um, comp time is not guaran, comp time usage is not guaranteed for anybody. If, if, if it requires overtime, department heads can tell them that they can't, that they can't. Ann?
I was just, there's a big need for additional, I mean, are people, I guess, why, why did we go up to 96 from 72? What was the talk about? Why, then, why do we have to?
Um, a lot of our guys, um, with the way our schedule works and the way it lands, you can't buy a trade, you'll have to use your comp time to do it. And some guys bank on their comp time and schedule it out, while they're out. So now I only have three additional days out and I can't accrue any more comp time. So I already scheduled my three days already out, my 72 hours that I have now. And I'm working a bunch of overtimes if somebody gets injured or something of that nature. Now I have all that overtime stacked, you know, on me. So it looks bad, A, for the overtime budget, B, for me and taxes, so it's taken it out of my wallet. So we would just like to increase that so I can convert a little bit more of that into comp time so I can take over the home at the end of the year.
You take more home if you get paid overtime, overtime though, but I mean, that's, that's fine. Okay.
I personally don't. So if I'm, if I've worked, you know, an extra 100, 200 hours in a year, I'm going to, and tax bracket, that's how I really could.
I could talk to you about tax bracket. So incremental revenue that gets to the tax bracket.
I think, I think the biggest thing that Adam hit on was the fact that, um, you know, some of our guys earlier in, earlier in the year, if we have an overtime shift or something that absolutely has to be filled, they'll pick it up. And let's say they wanna go hunting in fall or whatever, um, right now they can hold, you know, your three days and they're essentially just asking for that extra day. So if there's time off in the future that they wanna take, they're able to do that. Because we don't, um, you know, I look at vacation, the vacation sheet to make sure that if somebody submits vacation, they have ample amount to take time off, um, and comp time and so on and so forth. Um, so that kinda helps them out, you know, if they wanna schedule something out. I think that's one of the biggest things.
And as it is in the first few years, no app.
Yeah, I kinda saw that.
Anybody else?
I got one more quick question for you.
Mike?
Uh, 3203, just, just a question I got for you about, uh, clothing.
Yep.
It remains on the department property at the end of each shift. So if you're telling me all your equipment and clothing and stays on the?
Full-time and part-time people that are involved in the union, yes.
Really? Okay, just a surprise.
We, we have the lockers in the locker room. The decision was, a lot of us work at our jobs, a lot of them are EMS and other agencies. And we think it's fair that if the department is willing to buy us the clothing, then it's technically considered department property. We don't wanna be in ruin at their, so if they rip it, you know?
I'm golden. I was just surprised at, at the way it was and I think if you're doing that, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, so, um, I got a motion to either approve or deny the 2018 IAFF union contract.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by King, seconded by Stutz, to approve, uh, 2018 IAFF union contract. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Next race.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
All right. Any communications? Any unfinished, unfinished business? Any new business? Any old business?
Can I, just, just follow up? I'm just, the Norfond Fest meeting last night, we clarified a little bit, but there was some discussion out there, Public Works thought they had to do very bimbo on Friday, but we're gonna need their help as much as the passage.
I'm not sure where that came from.
But it just, you know, there was that discussion and I think Lori was communicating. I'm not sure if she communicated to Public Works, so.
Yeah, I'll be available.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, uh, moving down to ordinances. Discussion on ordinance 2018-5, an ordinance amending section 16.05, stop signs in Norfond Lake. Nick?
Thank you. Um, I've attached the write-up, which explains a little bit of the background along with, uh, a letter from a resident on Indiana Avenue and some maps. I apologize to the maps. They look better on, I've made them. They don't look the best on the, in the printouts or the PDFs, but, um, we'll start with, I guess, Indiana and Lake Shore Drive. So that intersection, if you look at the map, used to be a four-way intersection, a typical T or a X intersection. Um, we've since, because Lake Shore Drive was closed down, the, the crossing, as part of this project on that map, you see the orange line. We've put a curb through there. So there really is no longer a four-way intersection. It's all, only basically a T intersection or three-way intersection. Um, we did make a driveway access off-center in that orange area. There is a driveway access for the, the resident back there. So with that in mind, the two little red stop signs you could see on the map were what was there in the past and Lake Shore was a through street before. Really, this probably should've been addressed when the dri, when the crossing was closed, but it hasn't been. Um, and with the letter, and we, we kinda planned on, uh, attacking this when, when this project was complete. So what we're proposing here, we met with the traffic committee on last week, I think Wednesday or Tuesday, I have it in the write-up. Um, and it, just to give you a little, Ann asked about this earlier. The traffic committee is made up of the administrator. It says the director of public works in the policy, so it's really director of public services, director of planning and engineering, and then the police chief. So us four met last week to discuss this. And we had quite a bit of discussion about possibly putting the stop sign there and then opening up Indiana to through traffic. And, and we just think that it's best to just keep it a three-way stop 'cause there's, there is some different angles down there. It's not a perfect 90-degree turn. So being that some, one of them is pretty sharp, one of them's kinda open, we just, we think the three-way stop is the best there. So that's our recommendation, which is what the ordinance reads. We have added a temporary stop sign to, as of today, because we're opening the road up and I don't wanna open it for two weeks and then change it. So I did put a temporary stop sign on, down there. It's not permanently in the ground. It's kinda out in the street. So it's there right now. We also did add a stop head sign. We'll flag it for the first month so everybody gets used to it. Um, so that's the first one. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Just one question. Is there any concern? I mean, I've, I've seen, you know, like, being out there watching people take that dip kinda fast. Is there any concern in Illinois with that same?
There is, but there, that's, that is a different intersection. I, we, that's exactly the conversation we had. People are probably gonna avoid it and just take Illinois now. Illinois is a little bit different because it isn't a T intersection. It can go straight. So there, it doesn't have as much of, of value of putting a stop sign there. Additionally, on this one, there's a bunch of bushes and shrubs planted on that, on the north side there. That creates a little bit of a blind spot. So I think it, we, we did discuss that. I don't, if it becomes an issue in the future, we have to address it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on to the other one, the next map. So as part of, we just, we kinda, because we were meeting as a traffic committee, we thought we'd take care of a number of things. And so as part of the school remodel at, at the old, well, I guess it's the best of Yale and parking lot, oh, for the school administration office right now, um, they're adding an exit driveway, which I highlighted in orange, which lines right up with Chapman Avenue. So now that's gonna have some traffic coming in. We just think it, it makes sense, especially with kids crossing and, and everything else going on there, to make, add two stop signs there to make that also a three-way stop. And from what Chuck recalls, I believe, that used to be, I don't remember that, but...
It was offset a little bit by where you see the sidewalk comes out. It was, it was kinda funny how it sat there. So is there, so is that gonna be an entrance there? Is that an exit?
It's an exit. That's a, that's gonna be their bus drop-off.
Okay.
So they'll come in, the existing driveway, drop off and, or pick up and then exit there.
Okay. So you'll put a stop sign, obviously.
Put two stop signs, so add the two. So it's a three-way stop, uh, it's a four-way stop if you count the driveway.
Right, okay.
And I mentioned, was, were you asking, will there be a stop sign coming out of that driveway too?
Yeah.
That's up for debate. It's kinda up to the, the school. I mean, it's a driveway, so they have to stop. But if, I think to make it safe, we probably would suggest that they add one. We don't control that.
I don't think they have them though on, uh, one just off of. Oh, yeah, you're right. They don't.
It's just assumed on driveways that you stop, but we can suggest that. We don't control that 'cause it would be in their property. But we will suggest to them to add one there.
Okay.
But it is only the school buses using.
Gotcha.
All right. Another thing during the summer, there's a lot of traffic there with kids going to the pool. I mean, so it's another, I think.
Yeah. And that was the, uh, the other reason we talked about. There's a lot of kids that cross right there. So it would be beneficial that way, too. So that was the other one. For that, I, do you want me to go through all three?
All through ordinances?
I'm sorry. That was only the first one. The first ordinance, yep.
Yep.
So this is, uh, this is just first reading. So is there any questions on what the traffic commission is, uh, proposing here? All right.
So then, we're approving this whole list and all the changes?
Nope, it's first reading.
Next meeting, though.
Sure, but that's what that's.
This...
Yes.
The first one is just the 1605 section. So that's just the stop sign. There's, it's one addition to that ordinance.
Okay.
Well, actually, to get back on and then the highlights, there's, we cleaned up some errors that were already in place.
Yeah, you're right. I'm thinking of...
There are things that are already happening, going on.
I'm thinking of the parking one. Thank you.
They just weren't clearly addressed in ordinance prior to this.
So, yeah, I, I wanted to mention that. Thank you. I, I was thinking of the parking ordinance. This ordinance, there was a number of issues that, the way it reads is, if you read through these, it doesn't, I don't really like the way it's written, but it's the way it's written. It, it basically says that if you're on Winnebago Street traveling, this is where you stop. So there was a number of them that weren't really correct. So Mitch had put this together for, for me. And the two green ones are the new stop signs. He's kinda got a key up top. The cleanup are the yellow. Those are basically just cleaning up things that hadn't been addressed in the past.
Uh, Chuck, when we do do this, uh, so discussion on the ordinance amending the stop signs in Norfond Lake and then additional changes amended or, or do you want to just sort, just to add that language so then it covers everything that they did?
Additional updates.
Additional updates.
Good idea.
Okay. Any other questions on, on the item number one? All righty, so we'll approve that the next meeting. Uh, number two, discussion on ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance amending section 16.09, parking restrictions, first reading.
So this is a, like I said, because we were meeting, we, we talked about a number of issues. So this is right here, right, right out here at this intersection. Um, if you're traveling eastbound, coming from the community center on Garfield Street and you stopped to cross Wisconsin Avenue, many times there's a vehicle parked on the west side that's a bigger vehicle close to the intersection and you, you really have a hard time seeing oncoming traffic on Wisconsin from the north. So we've had a number of, we've all witnessed a number of maybe close calls. I don't know that we had any accident reports from the police department, but I've also witnessed several people in my, 'cause I drive this every day, obviously, um, several people going southbound on Wisconsin Avenue that just stop right there thinking they should and they, they actually don't have to. And I think a lot of it has to do with this vehicle parked there. So we realize there's probably maybe more of these in the village, but this one was the one that was brought to our attention and we've had a number of concerns over it. So we, what we decided we'd like to do is make it no parking where the red line is there. There is ample parking for that resident, for the apartment building along Garfield Street side. Also, they can park on the opposite side of Wisconsin Avenue. Um, it won't create as much of a blind spot. So we just wanna make that 80 feet north of the intersection, no parking.
Is that parking lot there is also between the library and that apartment?
They have some parking there, yeah.
Okay. And is there any reason, I, I know someone had, um, mentioned this concern also that you didn't wanna stop sign there or is that?
We talked about that. Um, we didn't feel it necessary.
Okay. Just see how this works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you could make that argument.
At every intersection?
At every intersection.
Sure, sure. Okay. That's it, Ann. All right.
Just got a little quick question.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Um, just, just in pass, do you notify that resident that they're, you're gonna do that or you just kinda, is there?
We will probably send the letter out.
So in case they wanna come and speak next, next board meeting or something?
Yeah, that's a good idea for the public hearing. I mean, we would probably send that out afterwards, but you're right, we should.
Just to get my head up, so.
We'll do that.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions regarding this ordinance? All right, so this is the first reading, so no action required. Moving down to number three, discussion on ordinance 2018-07, an ordinance change 8.05 of the building code.
I can take this also. Um, Pete has been trying to get this updated sometime and, um, basically it's just kinda updating the, the state changed who takes care of the building. So SPS instead of com. So all chapters changed in that. So he's kinda updating it that way and there's just a number, uh, some slight other changes to this. Um, one of those, I know that we talked about in-house here was, there was, there was language in here that if, if somebody took out a building permit, they're good for, like, six months and we extend them to a year for free. If they take out a building permit and need it reissued, so that means it's already been over a year. They were supposed to get it at half price and at, at that point, it's, we've already expended our, our dollars that they've already taken out. So he took that out of here. Basically, if they need a new one, they have to pay a full price for another, another one. Um, 'cause we, we really are pretty lenient on that. If they say, well, it's gonna take a year and three months, we'll usually let them work with that. But for the most part, other than that, there's, it's just updating to, to match the state specification and codes.
All right. Any questions on, on the 2018-07?
Quick, quick, figure in the back. She's gotta get the list of names right in the back. List of names in the back. I think you're missing Randy on there.
Oh, the other one, wrong.
Just on the ordinance.
Yeah, it's right over, same, right over.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. All right, so this is first reading, so no action required. All right. Down to item M, administration, discussion on review of the personnel policy manual chapters one through 12.
We had touched on this last board meeting as to the approach and I think the consensus was that the second meeting of the month, which is the third Monday of the month, we were going to take a section of the policy manual and start looking at them. It's not saying that we have to look through 12 chapters tonight. I'm not sure if you wanna always consider a half-hour discussion or, you know, we'll see how it goes. Uh, these first 12 chapters are probably cleaning up things more than anything. You know, a lot of times something is referenced as his this or his that rather than there, you know, just, again, it's just the language that was in, or things like that that we cleaned up. There are places in here where something is defined and later it's defined again. So we tried to eliminate duplication in some respects. Um, I tried to make an effort with the color codes to identify what was changing, just to make it a little easier to pick out what we're looking at. Um, so, you know, it was a good input between, you know, we had Heather and So, you know, it was a good input between, you know, we had Heather and Connie and Aaron Parsons, Nick, Pete, Chris, Darren Pouch, you know, in on this as we're going through it. So we're getting some good conversations, some good thoughts as to bringing it to what's we feel is probably current or what's, you know, languages. And we wanted to bring that forth to the board to 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 see where at. I think we're maybe two thirds through it, you know, we're trying to meet every week unless we have a heavy dose of vacations that doesn't make it fruitful, so. So with that, I don't know how you want to go about it. I mean, we can go page by page, chapter by chapter, or if you just want to leave it open to anybody who has any questions. How do you want to go about it?
I would just just go page by page. It's we don't have to spend a ton of time. I'm just, you know, if anybody has a question on a page, just move forward, you know.
All right.
Rest of the board okay with that? All right.
All right. Just the first four pages don't have anything. Final page five, we talk about, used to call it volunteer on call. That's really not true anymore. Everybody that comes, it gets paid some way, shape or form. So it's Chris had suggested that we get rid of volunteer and put paid on. So you'll see that reflected throughout the document. Six, seven, eight, and then we get into a little bit more of a marked up on number nine. It's been quite a while since we've talked about some of these things. So between Darren and Nick, we'll have to see if we can if we've got any questions to try to think of the rationale we did on some of these things and.
Do you want us to use the pledge or talk freely?
Oh, let's just talk freely on this one. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions on this one.
I mean, I I see the thing in blue, and I understand it's further in here. It's a repeat thing. That's why you want to yank that out, right?
That or there's still a little question if we should strike it or not, you know. That's what I had the blue as its question.
Written in the back a little bit too, but I mean, it just it just what you're thinking was.
Yes. One of the things too that you'll see is there's some large larger chapter like chapter one, purchase and scope. A lot of those things weren't in here. So, I mean, the first thing you saw was one point oh three scope, and it didn't reflect back into the index of front, so that was injected into there. I think it just made the document a little more readable, if that is such a word, but. And some of the language is just trying to clarify it a little bit more. Maybe through time, some questions have come up and the language wasn't as black and white as we should have been.
Do we need to give Chuck an answer on that, the area in blue? Do we yes or no?
Do you remember why we were striking that at all?
I seen it back further in the in the document here too, so.
Maybe that's why we were striking it.
But do you want an answer or you just want to leave it the way it is?
Well, I think it's still a question.
Yeah.
And I think.
I think Chuck that that I think I might have brought that up, and it was based on there's statutory language when it comes to police and fire chiefs that says that a person can't be fired without just cause. So to say that you're an at-will employee is not accurate. There's statutory language that says otherwise. So I suggested that that should be struck because it's not a true statement.
Right, I recall it too. Some of them, some of the employees are and some of them are.
Yeah, especially with the unions, you know. This kind of makes it look like it's everybody.
I guess when we get the other part, make sure we are covered. I mean, it's further deeper, probably two thirds of the way through here, so.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna strike that?
Yes.
White cells.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Anything else on nine?
Any questions on page ten?
Number eleven. I know there was some question on twelve dot eleven, the new twelve dot eleven eligibility.
Two dot eleven?
I'm sorry, two dot eleven, yes. I'm sorry.
You changed devices in the processes?
Well, I I the whole line was because it's blue was subject to be taken out. I think that's again, blue means where's our question of it, I guess. I think it revolved around just because they're trained and they have experience. If we're just talking eligible, I guess I'm not sure why that came a question too. And that's why, again, I it's been quite a while since we talked about these, and I documented when we talked, but I don't I don't quite sure why we had a question on that. Because if I read it right now, it seems like that's fact.
Yeah, what 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 type of certification? I don't know.
I mean, if they're trained, experienced, and completed all selection process reform with formal selection processes are used, so they're eligible. So I right now, I can't see a reason why to question it, you know.
Would you be like meeting standards would be better? I'm just throwing stuff out.
Yeah.
Nick, was that was that based on just a question as to are there times that we don't use any type of process? Get where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
And I don't know if that was the case. I'm just sitting here reading it now. I'm wondering if that's maybe why that was highlighted blue.
I don't remember that. I know we took the the whole processes of added process and a device as a just a a better word, but. I guess my feeling is we just take the blue off and leave it.
That's fine with me.
Leave what? Completely gone?
No, leave everything there.
No, leave it in, just change devices to processes.
Leave it only there.
I get it. That's fine.
All right.
Can I can I back up once?
Sure.
Department head, I think you just got a is the numbering wrong there?
Yes, it's supposed to be two point oh nine. Yes, yes, I saw that too. Yeah.
The question I have unlimited term employee, what why is that going away?
Because it's also defined in another, there's another place. Two point two two. It's also defined there. Two point two two. Position classification, right underneath it is limited term.
Okay.
So it's there twice. We just kind of again.
That twelve hundred dollars, is that because of PD, not PD, but public works?
That's because of WRS.
Meaning?
Then we don't have to pay retirement if they exceed.
Did it used to be six hundred?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Anything on page twelve? Moving on to page thirteen. Chuck, we don't have it listed in on there as a recommended change, but on page twelve.
Which number?
Where they just on number four, volunteer paid on call. Earlier, we took out the word volunteer.
Yeah.
And changed it to just paid on call, so we probably should there as well.
You're right later on the.
Volunteer.
That's good. Good catch. Good catch.
Moving on to page thirteen.
I think this two point three two, we just felt never happens. Is that why we took that out?
What?
Temporary appointment. Second one from the top of page thirteen. I don't think that's ever.
Does summer help be part of that or not?
I thought it was that's more or less the seasonal part time. Because you go over back to page twelve under position classifications, the second one down under there is seasonal part time. Twenty two point two two one B.
That seems redundant.
It covers that.
Just volunteer, okay, maybe that's different, okay. Paid on call. I just want a question on two point three eight. Why was that taken out?
Two point whistleblowing. I guess I'm not sure what we don't feel is a term needed to be there, whistleblowing.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Two point three eight, why did we strike two point three eight?
I would like anybody will speak up and have protection if they speak up. I don't know how that's done, but I if there's something that's not, I'm not saying there's nothing going on, but it's.
But this does the thing about protection.
It doesn't say nothing about, but I have no problem. Some employee would, I don't know if there's deeper in this.
Probably not.
You know, that if an employee would step up.
Yeah.
There's some protection.
Probably not gonna really leave it in there either.
It doesn't.
It's a definition. You can stay in there too.
I'm I'm fine with that.
I don't recall either. It's been for six, eight months since we've talked about this section.
Is it in the policy manual itself?
It is right now. This is the policy manual.
Boy, yeah, but is it written?
Anywhere else.
Anywhere else.
It's defined, but it's never used again.
Yeah.
It's possible.
Maybe that's what I guess.
It could be.
I could do a search on it if it's not used anywhere else in the policy manual, take it out and do it.
I'd like it.
I like it in it just so that it's.
If you want to expand out on some language on it, I would even like that better, you know.
Everybody okay with that staying in?
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions on page thirteen? Okay with the changes on there? All right. Moving on to page fourteen.
On the top line of page fourteen, which is continuation of thirteen, I have one or more of the fuller occurred, and I I read that today, and I can't be honest, you know, why that's the.
Which one?
The top one. It starts on the page before and the break in continuous.
I got a question on that. Does that make sense to you?
Well, I without my note of my my note in blue, to me it does, because it's saying that if lost time does not constitute a break in continuous service. I'm not sure what that is, but if it's not considered a break in service, the continuous service length should not be affected. And you should get the same benefits and everything else as if you continuous service.
If employee took leave without pay for a certain period of time, he comes back, he he lost no.
Well, I'm not sure what continuous service is, you know, I mean.
Medical, I mean, just.
Yeah, so I would just maybe that would be the example. Let's say somebody takes off six weeks for eight weeks for maternity. That's a continuous service.
Or National Guard.
National Guard, maybe, yeah. Some of those things, then you still get your benefits during that course of time.
I think as long as they're in pay status, you know, as long as they're like sick leave or.
Well.
Or this.
So I would think continuous service is being paid, if that's what you just asked.
I'm I'm okay.
I guess and I don't I I'm sure that's not why that's highlighted blue, but I guess the problem that I have with this is we're in definitions, and in no way, shape or form does whatever is written here define what a break in continuous service is.
It doesn't. No, you're right. So should that be? Well, that's a good question.
Definition would be continuous service?
Well, this is a definition, and it says this is breaking continuous service, and it like Darren just said, it doesn't tell us.
We would have to define what a break in continuous service is, and then this language should be probably added to the pay portion of this. You gonna rework that and bring it back?
I will. Anything on page fourteen?
Just a minor thing. I'm not saying I just run it out there. Three oh one, one B. Confirming, but this is the village board responsibility, confirming personnel appointments. It's I should said we should we're denying confirming or approving, or I guess I guess I mean.
The village board will confirm personal appointments recommended by the department's head and the village administrator?
Pretty much says we're gonna confirm it.
Well, no, that's just saying what we're responsible for. I mean, it doesn't say that we have to confirm or deny. Yeah, just saying that's one of our responsibilities.
Perfect. We're just trying to, okay.
Anything else on fourteen?
Do you need something with this number three?
We have a tab?
Oh, because it falls under number two.
It's absent from notification two. I'm not sure why that's blue. It shouldn't be.
What was that now?
Number three under two point three eight.
Wonder why it's blue, the number three, just the number three is blue. On page fourteen.
Did you want to change it to a four?
Good question.
Okay.
I was just going crazy.
Break in continuous service.
Yeah, there it is.
That's probably why the blue was there. Anything on page fifteen? Page sixteen.
I'm gonna go back to fifteen. I know the the PPDs and all that stuff or evaluations are spelled out further, but there's not listed in they're responsible for. But I think it's identified later for employee evaluations. Like administrators got to do department heads, and it's spelled out later, but it's not listed on this.
Is that a part of three oh three?
Three oh three or three oh two or three oh four. I just just I think it's covered.
Reviews?
Reviews, yes.
Yeah, that's separate.
It's separate, I'm just I'm just gonna make sure that's covered. Yep.
One thing I'll just add to that comment, one thing we tried to do going through this is remove any duplication where that was. Because then what happens is when you go to change it at some point in the future, you forget to change it somewhere else.
Fair enough. I agree with you. Sixteen, I have a question. Who's the human resource department?
We joked about that too. It's Chris.
I don't I mean, does that we only have one really, do we?
Nobody by title.
Does it really fall under the administrator?
No. We couldn't say a personnel.
Everything does. Right now, it's Chris.
She's really not, is she considered management?
No. But I mean, anything that comes to me, you just give to her, so we're just trying to eliminate.
Not saying you can't do it, delegate it, but there has to be usually a manager or supervisor.
For HR, you mean?
HR in that role.
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
So do we want to act on anything?
I mean, I think we need to spell it out what it is. I guess, I don't know, maybe.
I think that's fine. I mean, you gotta call it something, you know. I mean, if you find HR, that could be.
It was more about what's really happening, change.
Yeah, we're not gonna put a person's name in there.
Yeah. It's either. It's going so.
But the reason the reason it was changed is when somebody's change of status, say they're having a child or marital status, whatever, they're not really in most cases telling their supervisor, they're telling Chris. That's why it was changed.
Well, would it be payroll manager?
It 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 could be also, but.
HR sounds cooler. Let's leave it in there.
It seems like going to this person, in this case, Chris, you know, she knows you got to fill out this form or this form, you know.
Yeah.
And it she's more or less that we try to bundle those changes through so that makes sure they get processed correctly, so.
I think human resources is more appropriate, however, not maybe a title we have, but delegated by the administrator.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be a title, just. Does it make anybody feel better if we just change it to human resources and take out department since it's not actually a department? I mean.
Probably better.
That's a good idea.
That's probably better.
Anything else on page sixteen? Moving on to seventeen.
I have under four oh four, number two, there are just some things in here that I thought the group wanted to just check to make sure that this is compliant with attorney's, and I rather than keep sending an email here and there, I try to accumulate those and those things I have not sent off to him yet. You know, it's fairly straightforward, what I think is right, but we.
I mean, I I seen you're talking about two, right? And check within. I mean, I seen, you're talking about two, right, and check with attorneys?
Yes.
Can we just do the same thing? I think you added someplace else, what's required by the, by the state or by statutes, that we put that in there, what's required?
Which one was that passed? No, we did already, you mean?
Don't open arguments, check with attorneys.
Yes, that's what I was gonna check, what the attorney's on.
Yeah, okay, oh, you're gonna check.
I'm going to, yes.
Can I move up to, back up to K in the green area?
Yeah.
You had, you had work steps in there, but you put fit for duty instead, just because you didn't wanna identify that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we did know if that was a trademark or not, I think.
It's already changed once in the time that we've been there. I can't remember what it used to be called, and then it changed to work steps. So, rather than having to go back and change our policy every time they change what they wanna call it, it just makes sense to just say fit for duty. And then if somebody else comes in there and starts doing the same thing and charges less money, we can just go to them.
I mean, I, just one little discussion about it. Does that make sense to, we pay these people all those work steps, is there any, is there much benefit for that? State does none of it. I just, I just was wondering, well, I see all the bills come through, what we pay to send people through work steps, and what the state does is they make their employees bring in, you know, a thing back from the doctors, there's no restrictions, or the restrictions, what the restrictions are, and see if the employer can accommodate. When I look at, you send an employee through, there's nothing to spend five, six hundred on work steps.
I think it's about three.
I think it's really beneficial for our departments when-
I don't know, I just, I just, I don't, I just-
No, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but we had a similar conversation when it came to sick time, and maintaining language that allows the village to specify, what we can't do by law is we can't tell you what doctor you have to go see, but we can say, we want a different doctor than the one you came in with. If you don't do that, there's absolutely nothing to prevent somebody from going out, and if I was applying here for a job, and my wife is a physician's assistant, she could technically write one of those forms and sign it. So she could put on there whatever I tell her to put on there, sign it, I bring it in, and if that's what your policy says, you have to accept that as gospel, and allow me to come in and either work or not work, based on what she wrote. Maintaining this type of, of, uh, um, what's the word I'm looking for? This type of a clause is only going to protect us from anybody pulling one out over on us, is what it really boils down to.
I think what the state looks at it, it puts it back on that physician, they're, they're putting their name on the line, their, you know, reputation, or, you know.
Yeah, but you're gonna fight so many legal, you're gonna acquire so many legal fees fighting that battle, it's just now, I mean, the state has attorneys on, on their payroll. They can afford to do that.
I'm good, I just was wondering, just one little more information, thank you.
Anything else on page seventeen? Moving on, page eighteen. Anything on eighteen? Nothing on nineteen, moving on to twenty.
Nineteen, I wanna go back real quick to 5.02, it says that at the budget time, I think the annual budget, there'll be a table of organization or chart, I would like to see that.
Thought we took that out of there somewhere else.
No, you didn't take it out, I'm just saying, I-
No, we did, actually, earlier.
We, we said that that doesn't happen, so we took out that the table of organization was not as part of the annual budget.
No, you took it out someplace else.
Back on page fourteen. On page fourteen, 301, 1A. The village board adopts, or approves the departmental tables of organization, but we took out the language saying as adopted during the annual village budget, 'cause to my knowledge, in twenty-five years, that's never happened.
Right, are we, are we gonna take it out here, or is that gonna-
Yeah, yeah, we probably missed that.
Yeah, it should probably come out of there.
It should probably say as set forth-
As requested, I mean, but we should get one every so often, you know? I don't know when that should be, you know? Once a year? I don't have to be in budget time, you know? I don't know.
It really only, it's adopted when it changes. That's really the way it works, or has worked.
It's usually for, and you ask for, it's probably the ones that changed the most over the last five years, you know?
I could bring you one.
What if it read, the village of North-
Guidelines?
As requested, or?
The village of North Fine like table of organization as set forth and adopted as needed, shall serve as official documentation.
When changes occur or as needed? I mean, when changes occur or as needed, or-
As needed.
Okay.
Or when changes-
When changes occur, that's not so bad.
So, yeah, just so we get updated, just so, just so everybody is on the same page, 'cause that-
When changes are made.
Well, if changes are made and it's not adopted, then it's unadopted. I mean, I mean, it-
And they almost should bring it, almost should bring it back to the board, you know?
Yeah.
Sure it does. I like that.
Anything else on nineteen? On the twenty? So just a change on the bottom?
Yep.
Any questions on twenty?
Why do we take that out?
Doesn't happen.
Can, uh, we go on to eleven, 511, two? Does that happen? You know, with these automatic pay progressions, is that what they're talking about? Is that what they're talking about? You know, when you're on these steps? Is that, is something different?
Yeah, I think that's what it's talking about.
You're talking about, the village board's gonna be informed every time that they go up. To my knowledge, it hasn't been happening, but-
It's just been automatic, they just-
Automatic, but here it says the village board will be informed of when it occurs. They'll provide an opportunity to discuss. 'Cause if it's not automatic, because the employee's not performing well, they don't automatically get it. You read through the document here, I mean, all the way through it.
Yes.
Let's say if there was unsatisfactory performance.
It does say that in number one. So you're right, number two is probably not even necessary to be there. 'Cause number one does say that they can be withheld.
Yeah. But right now, that's, two is not happening. Do we want it to happen? Do we need it to happen, or, or?
I think one, to me, one defines it. If that's the definition, then it's absolutely-
Well, then I guess it should be brought into the board's attention on number one, if someone does, is not, is not getting it.
Maybe they're not getting it.
Yeah, so that we're aware there's problems.
If that makes sense, or not? Sure, we can add that.
Go, take two away?
Yep.
That'll work.
Anything else on page twenty? Moving on to twenty-one.
Three. I have Y. When employee demotes to a position having a lower job content, employee will receive its current salary.
Which one are we at?
Um, five fourteen, three, demotion.
It's in the lower classification, if someone demotes into a lower paying job, I think they almost should be in, slotted into the steps that the user service they have. I mean, somebody maybe want less responsibility, they demoted to a less, uh, demanding job, I don't know what I wanna use, but otherwise it says here that they'll go to the top of the pay range.
What's the flavor on it? That's a board question.
I'm just wondering about the-
It says if they are demoted, they can't receive more than the top level of that demoted range, but still-
Of that range, even if they didn't have the user service in, you know? Let's say if they were, let's say if Jake was gonna demote into a paramedic level position, and he'd go in the top of the pay range. I don't know how many user services he got in, but I'm not, I'm just using it for example.
You make something happen to you, don't you?
I don't, I'm just trying to remember if that was discussed-
Something like that, yeah.
I'm just trying to remember if that was discussed, and if Chris said that you couldn't do that, or, unless it was a demotion for, like, you're performing unsatisfactorily-
Right.
And you get demoted because of that. If it was a matter of, the village board decided to stop funding a position, and, you know, we're gonna put you in this role instead, does any of that sound familiar? There was some conversation-
We can leave that open for discussion.
I, I don't recall.
Let's, let's look at that a little harder.
Okay, let's leave that for discussion.
Any other questions, comments on page twenty-one?
Quick question on five. For a period of thirty consecutive days, is that working days, or is that calendar, must be calendar days, huh?
I think it was calendar. And what is it now? Isn't it just a week? Is it seven days now?
That's something later, isn't it?
That's something later? Maybe it is.
I mean, it's, you would think it would be calendar days, but it's, should be spelled out?
Yeah, spelled it out.
Just making specific.
Yeah, 'cause you didn't, what was there should have been struck otherwise, that's what I'm trying to-
I was trying to think of that too, why it wasn't-
It might have just said for a period of whatever days.
Temporarily appointed for a period of days, or more. Well, it had to say some number in there.
Yeah, thirty has changed, consecutive days is new, so.
It's longer than it used to be, I know that. Do you have the original?
The original's here too.
I think it's fourteen days.
Well, I'll just look at the locals right now.
Okay, I liked the thirty days, just wanted to spell out calendar or working days, that's-
Consecutive tells me it's one day after another.
But they're not working one day after another, they don't-
You're right.
I understand that, but thirty consecutive means one day after another.
Yeah.
Let me look at that.
Why do we switch that from the village board to the village administrator?
Which one is that, Ann?
Same one.
Just feel that's a, a job for the administrator to do that.
I had been ordered, you know, I'm not saying it's, what's it say here? Seemed appropriate by the village administrator and I had, and approved by the village board. You know, you make the recommendation and-
I guess, in my mind, it's a responsibility of the administrator, but-
I mean, that happens, it's happening right now.
What position's that?
I won't discuss it here, but, I mean, if somebody's gone for a period of time for medical reasons, the next person steps in, that's, I don't know if you wanna, I don't require that to come to board every time.
I don't think that's a board issue, I think that's the administrator's job to handle.
I mean, especially if we spell it out in a, you know, policy.
Just temporary appointment.
You're right, the reason that it says consecutive days and not calendar days is because if you just put in there calendar days, if I work in a higher level for ten days, and then three months from now, I work for, at a higher level for ten days, and then a month later, I work at a higher level, now I can make the argument that you have to pay me that higher rate, 'cause I worked thirty days. You get where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
That, that's why we, that's why we said consecutive.
Gotcha. So what's that about, then? Whereas the village board went deep, they had to let us know that's happening, you know?
We can-
You can approve it, just let us know.
Anything else on page twenty-one? Page twenty-two. Any questions on twenty-two? Moving on to twenty-three. Any questions on twenty-three?
Question I got is one, selection devices, F, police records check. I know the state, they do a lot of background checks, but is it, is it called police records check? Is that what it's called? I think one other place you scratched it. Is it more of a, a background check on an employee? Or is it considered a police background check? I just asked.
I didn't hear the question, Mike, I'm sorry.
Um, question number, actually, item number one.
On page twenty-three, right?
Yes, and number F.
Okay.
The police records check. Is that what it's called? There's, the state, we call it a backgrounds check, but there's like, like two or three different levels, but is it considered a police check?
Well, I think that we specified that because in some cases, we do full-blown background checks where we contact previous employers and references, and schools, and in all cases, I would think, we would wanna do a records check to make, to-
That's my question, is should we just make it a backgrounds check, so it gives you more latitude than just a police background check? Or is that-
Well, the background is in E though.
Well, I'm sorry.
So we put both of them in there. I, I think all we did was delineate the difference between the two.
I got it, thank you, I missed that.
Chuck, Chuck, that number one, he was talking about should say selection process, we change it in definitions. Selection devices to selection process. Right?
Yep, yes.
Anything else on page twenty-three? Moving on, page twenty-four.
I have a question for 6.08.
Fire.
What did we want?
We're laughing at the firewoods.
Oh, okay. I didn't like the language, the village shall participate, I'd rather have may. On, on six zero eight, you know, it gives us a little bit more, and it gives us some latitude down the road there too, but it should, the village may participate in the cause, as right there says, we shall participate in the cause, I'm moving.
So that's very important.
Have you negotiated?
Negotiate.
I mean, this we may, we'll, we'll-
Yeah, good point.
We'll run it by us and, um-
We had quite a discussion about how firewood ever got in there.
The question is, why did we, why did we, why did we-
Probably changed with the truce with all that stuff, you know?
Why, why would we move somebody's firewood?
You, you can't move it from another county now, so.
Why was C scratched? I mean, it's a no-brainer, but I just kinda, why was it scratched?
I just something we don't do, I guess.
We don't do it, I just kinda, it's just, and we wouldn't even consider that.
Anything else on twenty-four?
Just one quick thing. I want 7.02.
There's gotta be something here, because, you know, you talk about the state statute, but there's something else, the municipal court, there's certain things in there that we-
What are you talking about? Something about 7.02?
Public service mission.
I'm sorry.
I think it should be tied into your, to off-hours behaviors too, because you're, you're a, you're a public employee, and you're, you know, you're representing the village. I'm just looking at what the state does, and we can, we-
Says at all times.
What's that? At all time.
Says at all times.
But I, I understand it, but is it just when you're in work status? It does say all times and prompt, helpful amount. I mean, I just thought, okay, I'm just, I didn't, it should include off-duty behaviors too, that, you know, they can be held accountable for, if it's a reflection back on the village.
Oh, I see what you're saying, if it's a-
Right across the page on 7.08, it's got outside employment, well, that's employment, that's right.
But is it, does it-
We'd have to see where it might fit in.
I don't, I don't know, you could, you could say that, you know, dealing with off, off-the-clock. I mean, you'd hope people would act-
Yeah, I-
People make, people, I'm just, I'm just, people, I'm saying it's right, state employees get disciplined and putting things on Facebook.
These aren't state employees.
They are government employees.
Well, they're government employees, yes. I think we're reaching into their, we hope they, they act appropriately.
Well, I hope so.
That's a good question, I mean, if it's, if it's concerning Facebook or social media, I mean-
If it's, if it's grading your employer, let's say someone came down and ran the village of North Fine like down or something, or department corrections or stuff.
And that's happened.
They can be held, they can be held accountable for what they're putting out there, and they're a face of the village, so. I'm just throwing it out there, some experience I have, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, so. Something to think about. How about the county, Randy?
Well, I don't, I mean, I think we're all expect-
I don't, I mean, I think we're all expect, we were all expected to be, you know, represent the county in an, in an appropriate manner, away from the county. I, I just was wondering about, is there anything in here about social media?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think we've got to it if it does.
Yeah, I think we've been there yet.
No.
Did they address that the county or?
Boy, you're, you're taxing my brain here. Well, we sign a, well, employees sign like an, an agreement, you know, internet usage agreement, I think it's, I think it's in there.
Relating to work? Relating to work.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think that the village's policy regarding internet usage and social media, I think that's in the operating policy. I don't think it's in this one.
And Mike, to your point, I think leaving it the way it is, does leave a little bit of vagueness to it, that it does say at all times.
Yeah.
It does, I mean, I kind of like that.
I can tell you too, that the police department has. The police department has specific policy language regarding off-duty behavior. I, I don't know the answer to this any more than Randy knows what the county says. I'm wondering though, if, I would guess that there are differing levels of what you can and can't require of your employees off-duty, based on the positions that they're working. I mean, I would think that people working in, in police and fire probably held the different standards than, than the office staff up front, or, because you're just not as recognizable, you know. I think there's probably differences in what you can and can't require, so. I don't know that, I'm just.
Chuck, I'll bring you some language, you can just look at it, you don't have to use it, just I'll bring you some language and.
To where are we again?
Twenty-five.
Thank you. Anything on twenty-five?
When you talked about duplication, I'm just going to back up that background checks again, seven oh zero four, so I mean, you know, we just talked about it in another section here, right? There's some duplication there. Right, I'm not sure.
Well, that's when you're hired though, okay.
Yeah, the same thing, we just talked about that. Okay.
Yeah, there is some.
Now's the time to clean it up.
Why is it different? So, like, the selection.
Where was that, Mike?
The selection.
Was it all written in that section? Like five items?
It was a one selection license.
Process selection?
Page seventeen, I think, is what you're referring to.
Twenty-three, I think, twenty-three.
The selection process?
Yes.
I don't know, when Mike brought up the police records and the background. So, yeah, I suppose it does mention it twice, the background check, is that? Necessarily have twice like that?
Well, this is, this is under general conditions of employment. That's what the chapter we're in. It just says that a background check or, if we change that to, is that what we're saying, it should say background of police records check or something?
Well, it's just, it's already right here, right? Selection devices, background, and.
Then I guess the question.
I think that's saying that they can do it at any time, even after you're hired.
Correct.
Up on the top of the next page. It's just saying that we reserve the right to, you know, if we got a question, we can do another background check.
Original one, one is prior to employment, so.
Right, right.
So, this is just like during. Anybody else have?
At some point in here, I think, you deal with it, but I think employees drive a license, especially public works, I mean, there's, there should be requirement for that employee to report if he has moving violations that would affect the village's driving, or if they, if required.
Well, that's, that's a good point, I mean, once, I mean, every six months, we're, like, at my work, they check our license to make sure it's still valid. I mean, you know, and that's.
Well, that's number two.
We have to report it, if we don't report it, and it's found out later, we get disciplined. You have to report it to your employer, they put it on the employee. Some words through here, we'll, we'll address that.
Well, that almost seems like if that is the case, that should be right there.
I'm not sure where it is, but I'm just saying, but.
Right there at the top of page, page twenty-five.
Let's see if, I'm not, nobody ever gets a drunk driving or something, they should be.
At any time, yeah.
Right off the bat, you know, because.
But should that go to? That shouldn't be, that shouldn't go to the board, that should go to the department head.
Right, human resources.
Right, just. Just.
Anything else on twenty-five?
I have, I'm seven oh seven. Pregnancy. On item number two, response times. Should they be listed? What are they? There's certain positions that have certain response times that they need to, to be able to respond to the village. I'm not sure what they are, what positions they are.
Well, I know DPW is thirty minutes.
Should they be listed on here, in the policy? I mean, should they?
That's, that's probably something that was in the contract, that didn't get transferred to here.
What do you have, Darren, for response?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty.
Thirty.
And those are the only two, you don't really have any in yours, other than, you know.
Not written down right now, no.
I mean, there's nothing in your SOGs or anything, is it?
No.
The other thing it could do is, this could be a department policy, which is what it's referring back to anyways, because that way the public works policy should read, we had kind of, Darren had talked about having policy manuals for each department for certain things, because if the EMS doesn't have one, if you put thirty minutes in here, then you have to remove the EMS.
So, you could list out what, what a department is, you know?
Well, what we talked about doing was adding appendices at the, when we get all done with this part, we can actually put this in a tabbed format, and then we could have department policies and contracts at the back for additional reference.
It's going to be a big book.
It would.
But, what'd you say?
It'll be a big book, but that way everybody has it in one easily accessible spot.
Why don't we do that?
Maybe there's certain highlights for each department or something.
We'd reference back.
Yeah.
Okay, we'd reference that, it's a good deal.
Anything else on twenty-five? Moving on, twenty-six.
Question on that highlighted area, chapter eight, changes employment status. Does that labeling make sense?
Where are we at?
Oh, eight, chapter eight. Just the title.
The title.
Well, that deals with going probationary to.
That's employee status, not employment status.
Maybe it helps, Mike, if you look back to the table of contents.
Okay.
That's where, originally, we didn't add these titles, that title was in the table, no, no, I know, I'm just saying.
Really was just changed, I thought.
Right, I'm just saying, yeah, we put them into, they weren't listed here, that's what Chuck said earlier. Initially, when you went through here, it didn't say like, chapter eight, so all of a sudden, you went from seven twelve to eight oh one, and without those, we had no idea what the changes were, what, what, but if you look at the table of contents, I think it probably makes it a little more sense, because it says changes in employee status, and then when you look at all those together, union contracts, introductory period, conversion to part-time stat, then it, because you're right, it's just weird language, otherwise.
Do we need to change it there? I think it's good work set, do we need to change that language? Or the language or the wording?
What do you?
That makes sense.
What do you think it should say, Mike?
No, no, I just.
Because it's really defining going from probationary to a regular status. I think that's what a lot of it is.
One other question, and D. Upon successful completion, should we put that on there? So, upon successfully completion of introductory period. Just because they completed it, they have to be successful, there's other places you have.
Well, if they're not successful, they don't complete it.
Okay. There's other places it's worded that way, so I just.
The introductory period.
Just because it says it's a year, I've completed my year.
Yep.
So, it doesn't mean I, unless I'm told, I successfully completed, they might think, I'm just, it's worded that way elsewhere in this document, just so you know that.
Okay.
I don't know where, I mean, just, let me show you.
Seniority rights.
Regular status, you look over there, it says following a successful completion, so I'm just throwing some.
We could add successful in there.
Nothing.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. Anything else on?
Yeah, one thing you got on duration is, an introductory period may be extended for up to six months if the village administrator approves the extension at the recommendation of the administrator. It's kind of a win-win.
Which one are we talking about?
Uh, duration.
A, two A's.
Anything else on twenty-six? Moving on to twenty-seven, anything, any questions on twenty-seven?
Four C. Okay, no, all right, maybe not, that's okay. Scratch it. I was going to ask, I thought it was village board, but.
Paper cut.
Is this, is it, is it happening? I mean, I mean, I'm hoping that's happening, you know. Okay. We have, I have it circled for some reason.
Anything else on twenty-seven?
I've got a question. So, the union contract's different than. Oh, never mind. Misregard there.
Moving on to page twenty-eight. No changes on that one, anybody have any questions on twenty-eight?
Yeah, I do. If it's too much, I'll quit.
That's why we're here.
We get one shot, we get one kick at this thing, why not bring it up, you know?
Absolutely.
Why just go through the motions?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I think. One, B. I think it should go away. That's a union, all-union language. I don't think we need to be directed on how we, how we're going to.
You're saying your, your contracts don't do that, Mike?
We don't have contracts.
Okay, so, and you don't have language in your policy to do this, it has nothing to do with seniority at all?
Nothing, that's all. But again, a lot of this was all union language that was moved over, I'm just looking at the villages, they want to do something, why would we tie our hands like that? I just.
That makes sense, most.
I mean, I'm not, we can clean it up, we can clean it up, and then, maybe it's an employee you don't want. It's a, it's a different day now, you know.
I'm okay with that.
You have anything like that in your policy right now?
Where I will.
Unless you want to review it, Chuck, and bring it back to us, and I mean, I just.
No, I mean, I.
We don't have a union contract where I will in place, come in until you're fired tomorrow.
All right.
Anything else on that page, twenty-eight?
I'm just going to continue on, like, or not, F. It says up to eighteen months, is that the case right now? Is that, is that the law?
I think that's the Cobra.
I mean, does, do we want just whatever's legally required? I mean, is it eighteen months right now?
Pretty sure it is.
Does it change often? Probably not.
It's at their expense.
I understand, it's at their expense, but you're still on the village's policy, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, a year from now, they change it to a year, to twelve months.
If it's Cobra, I believe it was eighteen.
But I think what you're saying is just maybe what's legally.
What we legally responsible to do, you know, I mean, it's just.
Is it case of changes in the future?
You know, could just, whatever we're legally responsible to do.
Yep.
All right, good point. Anything else on that one, on twenty-eight? Page twenty-eight? Moving on to page twenty-nine? Any questions or comments on that one?
I, I tell you what, I like B. Those exit interviews, I would really like the board to see those. I mean.
On the bottom there, on the number seven?
On the top.
Or where? Oh, okay.
On the top. Because they may bring some to our attention that we, we, we are not aware of them, of, I mean. Oh?
Which one?
B, right on top, I'm going to, this is our, uh. An exit interview shall be.
Page U N.
On page thirty.
Oh, we're solving twenty-nine. Sorry. Here, Mike, do you want the gavel? Couldn't find it. So, you're looking at, at seven on the bottom of the twenty-nine, actually popping up to B, seven B. Anybody have anything on twenty-nine? Mike's in a hurry, we gotta get to thirty, okay, now we're on thirty. How about, we had B now?
I just, I mean, I, there's a lot to gain from one of those. You know, I use my, my experience from where I work. No, we see, the, the department head sees these exit interviews by inmates. But they'll talk about maintenance, they'll talk about food service, it's just to give you an honest opinion, they're leaving, and they'll tell you, and it'll spur, hey, you know, you might want to do this, or, it's, it's good to see what we don't see, you know.
And can make their stay more comfortable in prison.
The heat, the heat, it's thirty degrees in our rooms, you know, I said, we try to keep that thirty-five, you know?
So, what do you?
I'll just share that information with the board. Or they think that's wrong.
Darren, have you ever performed an exit interview?
Yes.
You regularly do that?
We've overstated a little on the heat.
No. I'll be honest with you, I mean, because you brought it up, I, we've, we've done exit interviews, and you're right, people talk about, I'm leaving because I can get better benefits, I'm leaving because I can get better pay, we bring those to the board, and nothing ha, and I'm not saying that we've done it and it hasn't, I'm saying if we bring those to the board and nothing changes, what's the point?
My point is, let's say if they said that I had a problem with this employee, my coworker, and nothing was done with it. It was, it wasn't dealt with, or, or I was treated badly, or I was harassed, and I was afraid to bring it to my attention, I'm not worried about benefits as much as, I understand to leave because of pay, I mean, we do what we can for the employees, but they can bring light to a subject that maybe they're not comfortable talking to their department head. I'm not picking on you.
No, no, I understand that.
We have E, we have E A P here, and they, and that's a, I mean, they can, like, if you're having a problem with another employee, I would hope that the department head would say, well, you know, you, that's, that's, that was originally, I was under the impression, that's, when the county went in with E A P, that was one of the first things they said, you, if you're having an issue with another employee, you know, this is a way to, you know, bring them both together, and I, I know, and I, in my department, well, with the county, it was used a number of times.
I think, I think an employee should, all employees should be offered an exit interview, and it should go to the village administrator, because they might have an issue with their, their department head, and they're not going to, they're not going to write it to B or you. They might feel more comfortable, I think it's going to be confidential, right, to, to the administrator.
Do you actually have a form, I mean, with questions at all, where you are?
I could, yeah, we do.
Could I?
I think we got a list now, okay, sure, I can do that. No, I do, I, I, no, there's some.
I, I, not trying to make fun of it.
So, Mike, I'm just wondering, what are you suggesting though, with the language, or you want it to say?
Maybe all employees, when they're leaving, it, employment with the village will be offered an exit interview form, and so it shall be returned to the village administrator. I'm just throwing language out there.
It's not necessarily, I mean, not.
Are they, are you saying they should be required to do it, or just?
No, no, it's always optional.
Offered it up.
But it's not necessarily like Mike's saying, I'm not assuming what you're, what you mean, but, yeah, I mean, if there's anything, not necessarily a problem with someone, but any ways that we could prove be of benefit or.
Perfectly fine with it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good idea.
What's the rest of the board?
Geez, I'm having a bad game. I'm having an exit interview with personnel.
Human resource.
All departments have.
That's like human resource.
All departments have it to cheat, except for maintenance, they're not allowed to. Trying to be funny.
So, the only thing. The only thing that would need to be changed, in my opinion, then is, it would just say that, go back to what it was, when possible, or. And I, or just.
Will be offered.
Or just getting rid of when desired, and it would say, an exit interview shall be conducted with an employee who is leaving.
No, I think that, actually, based on what Mike is saying, I think that we should rework that entire paragraph, because what Mike is suggesting is, basically, we provide them, they, they tell me that they're going to leave, I provide them with a form that has the questions, they can fill it out if they want, and forward it to Chuck if they want. Chuck's not required to sit down and meet with them and ask, which is what this language says.
Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not doing that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, no, what you're saying is right, I don't, I'm not saying that Chuck should have to sit down with that employee and discuss with them.
Right, no, we just give them an opportunity to air their grievances.
The administrator can reach out, that employer, maybe investigate a little further, if there's something that's really disturbing, or that he wants to talk about, you know?
It's Festivus, minus the poll.
So, it would be more of each employee's given the opportunity to do it. So, it would be more of each employee's given the opportunity to do an exit interview, is what you're suggesting?
Yep. That's a good idea.
So, that needs to be reworked, and then it would be a form that they would fill out rather than a conducting an interview.
Right, I would, I would.
Is this a suggestion?
That's my suggestion.
Right.
Anything else on page thirty? Moving on to page thirty-one.
I have one question on that page, C, on the top. Why would an employee ask for a? I guess maybe if it was late or something, who would request the, of the employee to have one, okay, I understand it, okay. Very many employees that ask, I want my evaluation.
Or if they feel that they're maybe being mistreated by their department head. And they might want to request, I could see the need for that.
Any, anything else on page thirty-one? All right, moving on to page thirty-two. Any questions, comments on that one, on page thirty-two? Moving on to page thirty-three, anything on page thirty-three? All right, moving on to page thirty-four, any comments, questions on page thirty-four?
You must have a question from Mrs. Streeter.
Why's that?
Well, I mean, going back to, you're striking all those things, those safety rules, you're making it more of a general statement, safety belts is one of them. You're striking it, making it just a general statement.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of many, many you should have, and so why start listing?
We should spell out a few of those, and, uh.
I mean, we're aware of them, they should be.
Sometimes you curminate it worse by listing.
No, I understand, but I just, I would think Mike would want to speak to this, if he could.
I'd rather see him left in there, but, that's a, it's a, just one vote, more words of Mike, well, just one vote.
One of the other things we're going to be doing at some point is going to the operations manager. I mean, that's where more of this detail of safety and everything else would be spelled out. I realize the reason why this is put in here, but, uh.
Would it be spelled out maybe in the department part of it, you talked about in that department, like public works or PD, is that what would be spelled out in there? What some of those finer details are?
Yes. In their policy and procedure manual, is that what you're saying?
They talked about it on the back of this, though, maybe the department might have a little.
If I, I think the discussion, if I recall, and Darren, you can help me out here, Chuck too, if I recall, we, we talked about by, by listing certain things, are we, it says federal and state laws, village safety standards, so, we're not mentioning that they can't speed, you know, though, that's kind of where the discussion was, we're, we're saying they have to do these certain things, they can't do these things, but we're not mentioning a whole bunch of other things that are federal and safety laws, so.
Just keeping it general under this?
Yeah, they have to follow state laws, and that way it leaves more discretion to, not more discretion, it's just black and white, then it's all state laws, need to be followed.
Well, you have, D is not a state law, I mean, that's something we want, that they're turning off vehicles, equipment when operators not present, vehicles, I mean.
But that's safety standard, village safety standard, and those are the things that are different by department.
Just as an example, I mean, and I don't remember if this was what part of the discussion or not, but, you know, if we have a police car sitting out on Pioneer and Winnebago, as a means of traffic control, you know, blocking an intersection, you can't turn off the car and take the keys out if the lights are on, because your battery's going to go dead in a very short period of time. So, there's those kind of things that come into play, and that's why I think it's better to leave it by department by department.
It's same with ambulances.
In terms of specifying those.
So much stuff in the back of an ambulance and in an engine that we can't turn them off when we are not plugged into a shoreline, because it'll take the batteries to nothing in a short amount of time.
And a squad car sitting at the hair salon, he's not going to shut his car off, somebody goes about eighty miles an hour, he's not going to take the time to start his car, and Darren doesn't have much for hair.
There was discussion why when the PDQ used a goal, I mean, it was, we had some talks about that, you.
But, I mean, just as long as it's, it's spelled out somewhere else, I mean, this is just an over, you know, overview of safety, but I mean, as long as it's spelled out in the, in the separate departments, because like Darren and Jake were saying, what the, you know, applies to like leaving vehicle running for certain reasons, I mean, just as long as it's addressed somewhere, and, and they're aware of what's, you know, required for each department. I mean, you could really fill this up, and. I understand, I understand this, I mean, as long as it's addressed somewhere else, I'm good.
It's addressed in each, is it addressed in each section of DPW?
Some of it's written, some of it's not, it's, it's more of a department policy.
Do we have anybody brand new in DPW that's been here less than ten years, that doesn't know, they're supposed to shut their truck off when they get out of it?
Probably not, but I think some of this too is, I mean, we see it's in department policy, and some of those policies really aren't written policies either, I mean, some of these are not, I mean, the Department of Public Works has safety policies that they follow, but there's certain policies that are just, it's department head decision, I mean.
A lot of times that employee will say, where's it saying writing?
Yeah.
I've been there, if I just, I'm not, show me.
I assume if that happened, it would get written down.
That's a, that ought to be written down.
Then it'll be written down, and just, you know.
Right here.
Okay.
On my hand, see? Is that okay?
That signs your check, no, Mike signs the check.
Anything else on page thirty-four? Moving on to page thirty-five, just adding the chapter twelve up there, anything else on, any questions on page thirty-five?
It's not a question, but just going to point out something we talked about before, of putting that first paragraph policy, as a representative of the village to the public, or the provider of service to an internal organization, each employee as a condition of employment accepts the fundamental obligation to promote and protect the interests of this employer, so there's some language.
That is some language.
There's some language that we talked about before.
Doesn't say while on duty.
Right.
All right, so moving on to page thirty-six, any questions, just a change on the bottom there. Anything on thirty-six? Moving on to page thirty-seven, anything on page thirty-seven, just a change on the bottom?
I think that covers your question, Mike, about if they have, have a moving violation, it's listed here as a disciplinary action.
Yep, motor vehicle operator.
Let me see that, where's that at?
Bottom of page thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven.
Last time highlighted.
But I've still leave on it.
Well, no, right above it, failing to report a conviction for moving violation.
Okay, fair enough.
It's that disciplinary action.
Okay.
Well, it's a law that the CDL holders have to report violations to their, their employer, because any, Darren knows this, any CDL holder that gets a speeding ticket in a POV, or a commercial motor vehicle of fifteen or more, that's a serious violation. Only get two of those in a year, and if you do, you get, lose your license.
So, is, is there anything else on page thirty-seven? Man, that was quick.
We don't get through very often, Mrs. Streeter, so, why would we, why would we rush her?
I was being honest, man, good job. All right, so, uh, so that concludes our discussion on review of Personnel Policy Manual, chapters one through twelve, thanks, everyone.
That was about forty minutes, we did.
So, thank you for everybody that, uh, that, yeah, worked on that, that, I mean, you can see by the dates of you guys working on, they've been working on it a long time, so we appreciate that. All right, we're moving on to item N, adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
A second? Is that your end? You got a motion by Keith, and second by Randy, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.